Or free. It could have been free, actually.
Give us an example of how it could have been free.
Well, it does sound like we may have had one location that suggested that you might be able to do some of the work. And that's something that would have to be checked into, but what if it were? If, if all building owners just say, well, this is what I think is appropriate. And I'm going to determine that, and if anyone says, well, we disagree, then I'm just going to go, heck, then what is the point of the mission?
I don't know, we never got to that.
I don't.
I'm sorry.
I, I think that that is. That's a red herring at best. Look, that's not what we're trying to decide. The issue is not the, the purpose of the commission here. All right. Obviously, yes, you're right. We don't want people going and painting their buildings electric blue. Although I will say. On the. Uh, appropriate historical colored part chart that you gave me for paint blues on there. So there's, there's, there's certain issues we can go down the road there. My point is though, you're right, we have to have some, some standards there, right? If, if he was saying, you know what, I'm going to. I'm going to take a balloon, blow it up and do a ceramic cast on it and throw it up on top of my building and call it a day, right? Wonderful, but that's not what's happened here, all right? And that's, so this isn't just somebody going willy-nilly with random materials. These are materials that are in the official guidelines. Uh, he has stated to him it's cost prohibitive. All right? I, and that is one of the standards, although it's missing from the three there. But also. The his- the historical materials aren't available either. And that's been.
Yeah, so he says.
Okay, so.
Then again, we're going back to, I, no, that's not up to me to determine.
And I don't, I don't think it is solely for him to determine. He, he said, you know what? My building is screwed up. It's missing two balls. I'm going to come up with a solution. All right? I think metal's too heavy. I'm going to come up with a solution. I put my time and effort into a fiberglass replacement because I actually did the research and figured out that is suitable replacement to do. And I put together a model and I submitted a package. Right? And so, the, that's, that he's done his work on that piece there. Now listen, if we can get. The wonderful metal balls for free, great, but okay, do we also have somebody who's going to attach them for free? And make sure that they're actually anchored in. I mean. Do we even want to go down the road of having to hire an actual engineer, architect? Which I'm pretty sure to go through this project, we have to go through that with city, uh, the county. Plans and such to make sure that when we're attaching this ball, it's not just going to willy-nilly fall down on the street. Right? Those are, those are costs associated. I just, I don't, I don't. Understand for the life of me why we even got to this point. With seven days to spare and a denial.
Yeah, and, and that was frustrating because we did give him a couple of opportunities to bring us the information that we needed. And it seems like it really might have been a simple process. We unfortunately do really need to check boxes. We need to be able to say that we've done our due diligence. As a historic preservation commission and follow the guidelines set forth. And these are national guidelines. These are not things that we have made up. This is a standard across the country for what historic preservation commissions do on a regular basis. And we are just going through that with the willingness to be flexible, right? That's really what we want. It's help us, help you, let's all work together. But we haven't gotten what we needed. And it sets a dangerous precedent if we cannot have the building to say, look, this is what we need from you. And honestly, I think it sets a bad precedent. You guys don't want to have to come and hash all this out. You're experts in this field. You don't want to have to do all the homework. So, I hope you can support us.
I. I appreciate. What this relic has done, but I also appreciate the commission. There's a purpose we have our commission. And I, at this point, I side with the commission. Mr. Mann.
I remember this first came to council and I think Mr. Gates you wanted to, to us. And Ms. Carlisle, I think you were in council at the same time, where's your name, if I remember correctly?
Yes, sir. I'm part of the author of the legislation.
And I will tell you, coming from a construction background, I think the only fear I had was we would have, we would come to a situation where. Uh, we would have something to be done on the, a building that's registered as historic. And something was going to be done, but, but the guidelines for would be use the term cost prohibitive and not really. But I always felt that then we had the safeguard of coming to council. And letting council in on some, some of the conversation and on what the, because. I was sitting here on a regular basis, other than Mr. Gates would be aware of the historic preservation dynamics. So, my fear was we would come to a place where we have something that's cost prohibitive to prevent someone from actually. Putting something on the bill and replacing something and, and be ruled out or, or said, well, you can't do that because it's not, uh, it's not in the same materials. So in the sixteen preservation briefs and the introduction from the, uh, US Department of Interior, National Park Service Cultural Resources. I just wanted to ask you, listen for the word substitute. I'm just wanting, I'm broadening the conversation. Listen for the word substitute. When deteriorated, damaged or lost features of a historic building need repair or replacement. It is almost always best to use historic materials, as Fairway's saying. In limited circumstances, substitute materials that imitate historic materials may be used if the appearance. And properties of the historic materials can, uh, can be matched closely and no damage is done to the remaining historic fabric or result. And now we know we're not talking ten to ten, but talking about this imitation thing here from the street. And then another paragraph at the bottom part of the paragraph said. Uh, some preservationists advocate that substitute materials should be avoided in all but the most limited cases. The fact is however, that substitute materials are being used more frequently than ever in preservation projects. And in many cases with positive results. They can be cost effective. They can permit the accurate visual duplication. Accurate visual duplication of historic materials and last a reasonable time. So I think there is a case we made on both sides of this issue. Uh, and, and that's where I kind of see it. Um, I, I think, just in my whole view, I think we need an openness to this, the idea of the word substitute. That gives the accurate visual duplication. Does this give an accurate visual duplication when you see it? If it's not made of the exact same materials, if those, if that's cost prohibitive, that was always scared me and. Ray, you go from the background on this stuff. That would scare me if I had a large project. I'd just back off the project. Then, then would be that, right?
I, I, for me, it all comes down to just there was some, some information that they needed that wasn't given. And that's all that was needed. And so. If the information could be obtained, then we can move forward.
One, one other point, let's not forget it does not have the same number of panels. And we, we did ask if it was costal and I believe Mr. Millik did say that it was possible. But at this point in time, it's not the same thing. And you, you really can't count the number of panels from the street. You can't. I would. So, I mean, that seems like something easy, but as presented, this is what we were being told we were approving. We couldn't present, it's not the same thing. It's a different, it's a different shape that has different panels by part, so.
And I, I agree with that. You know, the issue though is that, okay. To me, that should have been the substance of the denial. And that should have been the substance of the focus. And the compromise and working with the business owner. Not. Why can't we get the actual metal pieces? And that's where I have a similar problem. You know, because you're right. It, you know, so I don't have the colorized pictures, right? So if I, which I am inclined to overrule you guys, uh, you know, am I overruling you? But then how do I modify it to where we actually get it to look exactly like it with the exact colorization? Because I don't have the information, uh. To make that determination either. It's not, it's not as cut and dry. And, and mainly because there's not any really record of any of that, those discussion pieces. You know, that, regardless of if it was procedural, that should have been a focus of the denial letter. You know? In addition to the fact that we just don't know if it meets one of these not three, four criterias, right? We don't have the information to meet four criterias. In addition to that. The piece as presented does not match the description as required by the Department of Interior. And it doesn't match the colorization. Those, those things in the long run. Help administratively immensely, especially when we're the ones that are having to deal with and feel in the process.
Mr. Gates.
Well, if, if. If the intent, and I think I heard Mr. Martin say this, if, if, if the intent is to modify the decision. The best place to modify that decision is with discussions and negotiations. Between the property owner and the commission. And the best way to achieve this modification, you know, goodness knows I'm, you know, I'm, I'm no resident expert. So, but. The commission is our resident expert. And again, working with the property owner. You know, if we want to have a decision that, that both parties can live with. The best decision is to remand.
I agree. Mr. Robb.
Well, I have to agree with, uh, Mr. Martin on this. Uh, that, that's not one of the choices we have. And we need to make a decision here tonight and. I'm certainly not going to kind of vote to, uh, command that back to the commission for any consideration, so.
We have, Mr. Gates.
Just, just so you guys know, the ordinance does say that council has thirty days from the notice of appeal, filing of appeal. To make their decision, it was filed on the number fifteen.
So we got a week. Mrs. Carlisle.
That's one of the co-sponsors of the legislation that created the commission. The purpose of the commission. Was never what we see here tonight. This was not its purpose. Several COAs, certificates of appropriateness, have come to the commission. And either have been approved exactly as they were presented. Says in a minute, approved as presented or as written. Some were approved with modification. And those modifications were discussions with the building owners. With the proposal. Sometimes it was color, sometimes it was material, sometimes it was the date you were going to start. Sometimes it was whether it was paint on a surface that had been painted before. A lot of things were entered into that discussion, all following the Secretary of Interior's recommendation. This was the first time there was a denial. And the first time that the communication between the commissioners and the building owner broke down. Which is why you're involved. Now. There could have been multiple times where the commissioners and the building owner. Could have gone a little bit differently than they did. Eventually, it reached a point where they were just not coming together. And that's why it was written into the legislation. That state council would always have that oversight. You have complete oversight of this commission. You decide who sits on it. You decide whether or not we are following the rules and regulations when we want to do, all right, a grant. That we go through the proper process, do that grant. In order to, you know, help a bu- building owner, the grant for the preservation plan that we have, a grant for design guidelines, whatever. It all comes through you guys. It was designed that way. Its purpose has always been to improve and, and help owners of historical properties downtown or anyplace else. Be able to get some assistance and direction when they were trying to do something. And that's what the certificate of appropriateness is for. I direct you to read the certificate of appropriateness. I think you have the copy of that, the original. The directions that are written on there. Sometime in twenty eighteen, maybe March. We, we went as a commission over and over and over what we would like to have in front of us to make a decision. Mr. Millik had all of that information in front of him. And chose to do a shortcut. And we got stuck there. That's not what this was about. That's not the original intent of the commission. And it's unfortunate that it came to a point where someone decided to appeal. We had to put that into our legislation. The State Historic Preservation Office went through this piece of legislation line by line, comma by comma, brought it back to us. We adjusted what they told us to adjust and we were actually directed by the State Historic Preservation Commission. That's who did this. Councilman Gates and I put it together, put our name on the top of it. No, away we went. Because we felt that it had been way too long. Since the national center, the center district was designed. Well, now it's more than that, but it's over thirty-three years ago and absolutely nothing was done with the fact that we had a nationally recognized historic center district. And we were letting anything go. Anything that wouldn't be done in those thirty-three years could be done. Finally. Somebody decided maybe a historic preservation commission. Appointed by the mayor, approved by council, and having to come to council. Would be the way to go so that we could control, if you want to use the word, the appropriate word is advise. Anyone who owns a historic property that's on our historic list. To do the best possible way we can to rehabilitate, restore and save those buildings. That's our history. It's your history. Do what you will with this particular thing. I'm going to tell you it's unfortunate it came to this point. It's unfortunate that Mr. Millik. And the members of the council, myself included, uh, the commission, myself included. Could not express, this is what really is the best way to go. And he would be willing to say, that sounds, I think I can make that happen. And they would be willing to say, that we can live with. That would make it historically accurate. That's not. It's not the right number of panels. It's a substitute material. Granted, it's a substitute material. I really do believe that there are persons in this area that can make that. And metal. Not necessarily so darn heavy, but once you put it up there, it's coming down in two days. It's already too up there. It's been up there for over a hundred years. They are too heavy. I think it can be done. The commission was simply asking, let's figure this out. Let's do some more research. Mr. Millik, will you please research with us? And see if you can find a material that's metal. Instead of, right. But that broke down. And now when you get busy with your opinions. Not actually documented historic materials. But your opinion of a material. Now you start getting into gray areas and you're going to get right back here again, time and time again. It gets to be a one-shot deal. It should never happen here. It shouldn't actually happen this way. And I am so sorry that it came to this point. Mayor, I understand what you're saying. Cost-effective. Absolutely cost-effective. Maybe there was some, maybe there was a grant out there to help with this. Do the, do these balls have to be replaced right now? How urgent is this? How urgent is it that those two balls get back up there? It's not that urgent. They've been gone for a long time, have they not? And if they're gone for another couple of months? They're gone for another couple of months. How about six months?
Or gone forever.
Or they can be gone forever. But at least let's not do this thing where it's my opinion or whatever. The commission followed their rules and regs that they have. Regulations or guidelines, whichever way you want to call it. They followed the procedure and it ended up here. Thank you.
Can I, uh, respond to that? I appreciate, uh. I, I'm not sure how we got here either. I mean. Just because I do not want to make this out of metal, this is why I ordered. I understand the whole purpose of the certificate of appropriateness. But my question is. Does the Shelby Historical Commission understand? When it is necessary to issue a certificate of appropriateness? If I, I'm looking at the ordinance. And it all refers to section fourteen eighty-eight point oh and up for the certificate of appropriateness. In big capital letters and gold print. It says that for, it's only necessary to get a certificate of appropriateness. If you're within a historic district. And I'm lucky enough to have interest in a property that's in the historic district. That's why I'm here. But my question is, why is the Shelby Historical Commission issuing certificates of appropriateness outside of the historic district? They have no jurisdiction outside the historic district to issue the COA. And I mentioned that at the very first meeting and they said that that wasn't true, even though.
It's, it's not germane to this particular issue. It may be interesting, but it's not germane to what we're trying to do.
That's true.
We have, we have, we have a motion on the floor to remand this to the, to the commission.
And I seconded that.
I just wanted to, the only reason, I just wanted to respond to the whole thing about certificate of appropriateness. And what it's for and when it should be used. And I do wonder why it's being used outside of the historic district.
Again, Mr. Trump, it's not germane to the, to the, to the, before us.
Okay.
I just wanted to make that aware in the council where that they're overstepping their boundaries.
Again, the man is, gentleman is out of order, Mr. Trump.
You're out of order, Mr. Millik.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll, please, sir.
Okay, we had a motion from Mr. Gates, seconded by me, and a move that the matter be remanded to the commission for further action. Discussion on that. I feel Mr. Millik needs to. Provide some more research, get the information the commission needs. Mr. Robb.
Um, I think you pointed out the section there that, that I don't know that they have any tenors on the commission. And they don't have an expert on, on that kind of work. Maybe it's up to the commission to find out. Get that information.
That's a good point, Mr. Robb, and, and hopefully the commission can, can help out with that. I agree.
Yes, that's a, that's a good argument to remand this.
Mr. Robb.
Unfortunately, that's not one of the choices we were given here. We, we, we're, we're either going to modify, we're going to deny, or we're going to approve. That's what we're here to do. Nothing in here, it's simply, we can remand it back to the commission for them to modify.
The motion to remand is a modification.
I, I would. I have a little difference of opinion on that, but.
Well, why don't we go for a vote?
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Nay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Nay.
Yes.
I move the committee of the whole to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion, I'm going to be excited by Mr. Martin, to adjourn the committee of the whole. Vote.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mann.
Counselor comes out of committee of the whole at eight forty-seven.
Mayor, I know the council recess until nine o'clock. Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Gates, and a second by Mr. Martin, that council recess until nine o'clock. Discussion. Ball.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
I actually want to have some video footage of what's out today. If you can find that. Now the one, now the one.
When it comes to, when you find the person, and they could be.
Saying that, does not. And this was a good point.
Wouldn't it happen that way if they're juveniles, as we suspect that would be in the curfew of juvenile.
This is an argument.
Yes.
Which is very likely to make.
Yes.
You got circle and you just divide.
That's a decagon, isn't it? Because it's a ten sided.
Right.
Yeah.
You try to, to.
I know what you're saying.
What I, what I like about when I create, I mean, all of that.
We'll work through that.
There you go.
Figure it out.
But now, if I do a decagon. I haven't seen it. I can, I can actually, I can make this all this.
There are persons who are, who are.
So you got, of course you got pictures of it, someone that.
I can make a decagon. I'm fine.
Uh, no, let, give me a day. Let me look at it tomorrow and see where we're at in the reporting and processing process. And I'll give you a call any morning or send an email like that. I know what the concern is and I agree with it.
Now, if you can, if you do, then if you do aluminum, you might as well do fiberglass.
As long as I can verify.
But aluminum gives you that.
Enough pictures.
So there's my pressure washer or something.
I understand. I totally agree. Maybe very.
Fiberglass, I know what fiberglass is. It doesn't look like metal.
No. But you can make it.
So in the event that we do. I just want to verify that we have enough good pictures.
It's not a material. It's not a material.
That's true, but neither with fiberglass.
I know, but fiberglass and aluminum, it's part of the can.
Aluminum is one of the substitutes.
I'll find out.
If it became.
Because you can shape it differently, what do you mean? Aluminum, fiberglass has one feature, aluminum has another.
One feature that aluminum has, well, I think it has.
I didn't have your startup legislation.
Aluminum.
Exactly.
And fiberglass were introduced at about the same time.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
If you know around.
That's true.
But actually aluminum was first without it just for, you know. The only persons that were using it were the military.
Right.
And actually, that's part of how I came up with this design. Was the, the first aluminum frame that they needed for the grass up was. And then that's basically how I made this, you know, made the frame.
It was two words.
Covered with, you know, the cover.
We were, we were asked to go straight to second two.
Which means.
And I understand, I understand your great issue, I understand the great issue. I understand it's heavy, I got that.
Very.
They still want to apply the two that are up, they're still there. They are heavy.
They're heavy because of how they're hanged. Their ankle differently. The only way that would work is you'd have to, uh, very front, you'd have, why the.
Well, I read the news about the pain problem.
Is because of kind of strapping up. And the, the. Then you're going to bring, then you have to bring down, you know, you have to put an additional. I, I don't know.
I guess what I'm saying is.
But this.
When you say, yeah, I'm not going to, then if you, you end up.
So there is.
Let's not our imagination.
Let's look at fiberglass.
I know.
That's your imagination, look at fiberglass.
You're very. There's.
Well, but not at this point. You know, with whoever. But it's still fiberglass.
Get together.
But I think the ultimate goal is to make.
We lost you all up there, we want to put something else up there. We want to put something that is as close to being historically accurate as possible. But not only is that, that's going to.
I was watching seven o'clock, so I was here.
Well, it's very amazing on, when TV comes on at eleven thirty.
So, I mean, I put it, I did that, I didn't give it up for this. It's a good deal, you don't know how much.
Why do you know how much?
You don't know.
Yes, I do.
I, I believe you, you do, you probably made sense, but you know, I, you know, I never thought to make this shape, actually. I thought that's going to be.
That's the problem. The problem is this, what are we trying to do? We're trying to rescue, we're trying to put this building, the side of this building, back to sell it to the homeowners. And so, let's concentrate on the problem. And on the side, this is one of the ways to do it, and if you don't do it right, it's hard. That's not, what is this?
Well, that's about where we're at now.
I know, so let's not be there.
Uh, but that's where we're, I can't, I can't go.
It's the only option.
That's the way.
Because there isn't somebody else that can do this for you. He doesn't.
You can try to, you know, we're definitely get that.
Every single, hold on, because it's a tax.
I have to give everyone.
They spent years.
Wasting my time, can't hurt.
It's not a waste of time.
It's a waste of my time. It's a, it's a. I don't have a problem. My, my problem, my problem was that you won't. Listen to me. I did, I hate you to watch right there when I said I knew it was inside there. No, because it will probably, it'll take me at least a month and a half to stay there. Because I have to. If it was just the octagon. Decagon.
My nephew, Reynolds, I had his sickle, and they couldn't have. So he planted.
I mean, honestly, if that was an eighteen store company. It was a really good story about it, so.
It would look good at the top of the house.
Couldn't have one, you know, you had to, you know.
You can climb up there. And I think it's. Because I, I will do the ten sided. So, from the obelisk.
So many, back from the.
That wasn't even, that's.
And I, he saw him telling you.
I mean, you're not required to have a ten sided.
Window treatment.
You're not required to put anything.
The People's Republic or whatever, where you have some guy who live.
I, I, they call them columns, but they're really proper. A column, see, I never thought I'd do this.
But here it is.
But here it is. A column is something that holds up. You know, I remember I studied that. But an obelisk, that was the difference. Is freestanding, you know, it just sticks out in there, like the watchers' mind.
Uh, yeah, right. There's several of them.
But.
No columns.
No columns.
They're not columns, they're not. But if you said that a lot, people wouldn't know what a.
Yeah.
You better.
See you later.
All right.
Yeah, wait.
I know.
Who's next on the chopping block?
I'm good, yeah.
We just got warmed up.
Look at the time.
It's been a while, it is nine o'clock.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council goes back into session at nine o'clock. Is there any other unfinished business? All right, let's go to legislation.
That's good.
This one. Mr. Martin, do you want to raise your hand?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules to. Sure, the news was sent to go to ordinance thirty-six to twenty twenty-one, followed by resolution number seventy-two twenty-one.
Mr. Martin was asking by unanimous consent to move forward then to ordinance number thirty-six two thousand twenty-one. And ordinance resolution, I'm sorry, resolution number seventy-two two thousand twenty-one, suspended the rules to do so, yes.
Could we add ordinance thirty-five in there? Um, as well, because there is a Black Fork Commons line item in there as well.
Amendment, ordinance thirty-five, thirty-six, and then resolution seventy-two twenty-one, suspended the rules to do so. Are there any objections to doing that? There are none, we move forward then to ordinance number thirty-five.
Ordinance number thirty-five, two thousand twenty-one, amending ordinance number eight, two thousand one, annual appropriations and declaring an emergency.
I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be run on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin, that the rule requiring that an ordinance be run on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
A motion to suspend passes?
I move the ordinance to be taken up and passed.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number thirty-five, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Mr. Robb.
Thank you, um, most of this is, is housekeeping, um, for, for year-end stuff, appropriations, uh, such as the hospitalization line items and the engineering and construction line items that I have in there. Um, those are all, well, hospitalization, I just missed my market appropriations. Um, the other ones, we just did some more projects than had been anticipated, so I needed a few more funds in there. Um, the various transfer line items, that's just to increase the expenditures in the income tax line item so that we can move the extra money that we receive to the general funds and such. Um, otherwise, they're just going to sit in there at the end of the year and kind of gigantic balance. Um, the other line item in there, you see Black Fork Park, that's the third one from the bottom of seventy thousand. Uh, when we originally did appropriations for the pass-through funds from the C I C to us, um, I was seventy thousand dollars short. Well, really, costs have increased since the beginning of the year. And so, this line item needs to be increased so that we can do our resolution later. It is a pass-through, uh, we will receive that, that money in and then extend it out, it's just a, uh, bookkeeping entry. So that's, that's pretty much what I have there, sir.
Thank you, in further discussion, Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I assume the finance director has requested a amended certificate from the county budget commission.
Yes, I have.
Thank you, in further discussion? Wait for roll call vote, oh, just.
I'm not asking for a correction, but just a notation, Black Fork is two words. Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Run, ordinance number thirty-five, two thousand twenty-one, passes.
Ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-one, amending ordinance number eight, two thousand one, annual appropriations and declaring an emergency.
I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be run on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin, that the rule requiring that an ordinance be run on three separate occasions be suspended, discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
A motion to suspend passes?
For the ordinance to be taken up and passed.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-one, discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, we have two gentlemen here in council chambers that have an interest in this, I wonder if either one of them or both of them wish to speak at this time.
I'm happy to just address, just for a second. Um, you know, the, the reason for this request has been made in a couple of different parts. Um, one, it's really a.
Excuse me, Mayor, the gentleman needs to give his name and.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jake Penwell, one sixty-eight West Main Street. Uh, and, uh, and on behalf of C I C, the Union Group Corporation, the president and organization, uh, I've said, I said earlier in my comment how, uh, how much we appreciate, uh, you know, the public-private partnership that we've had. This, uh, the two hundred fifty thousand dollars that we're needing is coming in, uh, as a part of a couple of things. One, we know that the world we're living in has driven construction costs up, um, so as to not, um, take our project, um, and have to cut things out of it that makes a very big overall change. We're very cognizant of everything that we've been working through, uh, with the engineering company and with our land state architectural design company. Um, there are some funds that have fallen short, a little bit of that comes in part also with, um, with some project management, so to allow us to make sure that this project happens completely over time and on schedule, um, and with all the appropriate materials too. So, uh, with that being said, uh, if you remember and recall, uh, the, uh, dollar amount that was, uh, approved with phase one of the project as a part of the eighty-twenty, uh, match for the city for, um, regional planning dollars for phase one. Ended up being able to be paid a hundred percent by regional planning, uh, allowing that, uh, the city's investment towards this project was able to be put on hold. Um, knowing that, I hope, you know, we just talked about phase one and phase two of the project, overall, that project totals to about a one point, um. Yeah, really, I want to say one point six million dollars a little bit, and, and knowing that also we have a lot of private donors towards phase two. A lot of those, um, those individuals, um, also were very ecstatic about their donations and part of the project with the city's commitment to approving that public-private partnership. So, we were happy that we were able to put it on hold, what's allowing us to do is move forward with other projects too. But as we've gotten to the point of, um, uh, needing to make sure this project can move forward on time and on schedule and allow us to get to half the dollars, the three hundred fifty thousand dollar state capital off of a budget dollars, uh, towards the project. And as a cash flow, um, issue, and it's also just rising costs, so we're asking for that investment to be made, um, we appreciate everything that's done with that.
Any questions for Mr. Penwell? Any further discussion on ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-one? Roll call please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-one, passing.
Resolution number seventy-two, two thousand twenty-one, approving the plans and specifications and authorizing the mayor as director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Black Fork Commons Phase Two project within the city of Shelby, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
For the resolution to be taken up and passed?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of resolution number seventy-two, two thousand twenty-one, discussion? Mr. Martin?
I'm thrilled we're able to invest in this as a city and I look forward to its completion and being able to celebrate it for years to come. Uh, as Mr. Penwell had talked about, um, I believe the committee was kind of between halfing the side whether, uh, we were going to do some cost cutting. Uh, and I kind of made the joke of, you know, we could either choose Six Flags Park or a Disney World park. I think that we're going to be well on the way to something that's not just a, a, a point of greatness in our city, but also a point of pride. Uh, and I'm thrilled we're able to make that investment, um, and look forward to enjoying it for years to come.
Thank you, any further discussion? Mr. Gates?
Um, I'm looking at the, the project manual on page four, item seven. It talks about completing the project on or before June third, twenty twenty-two. Look back on page eighteen of the contract. Article one, it says said work shall be fully completed on or before October thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Gates, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-two would be the proper one to put in that section.
So, Mayor, I see unanimous consent that on page four of the, uh, project manual, the date in paragraph seven be changed from June three, twenty twenty-two to October thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Hi, Mr. Gates is asking by unanimous consent that in, uh, paragraph seven on page four, the, uh, date of June third, two thousand twenty-two be stripped and replaced with October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any objections? And no objections, that's a little bit vague. In further, you get the eagle eye award. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Resolution number seventy-two, two thousand twenty-one, passes.
We're not done. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're ready for ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one.
Right. Ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, amending section two hundred thirty-eight point zero one, establishment membership of chapter two hundred thirty-eight, Police Department of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Shelby.
Move third reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the third reading of ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
The third reading, ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, passes.
Move the ordinance to be taken up and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, passes.
Ordinance number thirty, two thousand twenty-one, enacting section two hundred thirty-four point one-two, property tax valuations, chapter two hundred thirty-four, Director of Finance and Public Record of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Shelby.
Move for a reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the third reading of ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Nay.
Order number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-one, passes this third reading?
Move the ordinance to be taken up and passed?
Second.
We have an ordinance by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Nay.
Order number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-one, passes.
Ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-one, establishing a zoning classification for property annexed to the city of Shelby, Schuler Moore Anunciation.
Move second reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the second reading of ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Just per our, per our ordinance, there will be a public hearing on the six-thirty twentieth of the Florida Council.
Thank you. What part?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty? Mr. Gates?
I, is that what the legal notice said? I thought it said the sixteenth. It's past working hours.
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Mayor, if that's the worst that happens to us, it's still a good day.
Will you correct this one? Then you're going to send out another notice that's actually twenty, or do we have to read by this one?
We'll have to send it out thirty days before the hearing. So if we don't do it on the sixteenth, then we change it a lot to post call it the next hearing, the next reading of council.
Sixteenth? Mr. Gates?
I wonder what the clerk is doing that evening?
Whatever you guys need me to.
We're going to stick to the sixteenth. All right?
Okay.
Which, Mr. Gates wants to say the page here.
Perhaps I should say what the clerk and the president of the county are doing that evening.
Whoa, that changes. I'm sure we'll be delighted to be a duet.
That's right.
All right, sixteenth it is, okay. Any further questions for Mr. Gates? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Order number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-one, passes.
Ordinance number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-one, enacting section two hundred sixty point twenty-eight, office hours of chapter two hundred sixty, employees generally of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Move for a second reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Mr. Gates, I think I saw him first.
Mayor, I just want to make it clear that my, my authorship of this ordinance is no way to promote criticism at all for anyone who works at City Hall, whether they work, however they take their eight-hour days and whatever, you know, they are giving their best to the taxpayers of this community. So, you know, for me, this ordinance is about, is about public service.
Mr. Rob?
I just want to reiterate what I said last time. I believe that the setting of the hours of City Hall and the utilities office is an administrative function, and I don't feel this ordinance is necessary.
Further discussion? Mr. Martin?
Yeah, our charter definitely puts the administrative functions and executive functions with the mayor and several other offices, but it does say that unless otherwise codified by City Council. So it definitely is within our purview, you know. The, whenever, whenever I look at these kind of, I'm going to say fights, but it's not really fights, but these clashes, we'll say, between separation of powers, which are, by the way, designed, right? They're featured, they're not a book. The way that our constitutional system of governance is supposed to operate, where the different branches, the different, the separation of powers are constantly clashing with each other over what powers belong to them, right? And so when we look at this, I do think administration is an executive function. However, in certain cases, I think that having better oversight of City Council is warranted. And in this case, I do feel that codifying our office hours isn't a bad thing. It certainly doesn't dictate to the mayor how many hours the mayor has to work within that framework. You know, the mayor could choose him or herself to work till six and do that. And I, I think that there are a couple of things that I would like to change in this and propose changes to make it a little more substantive, but also a little more flexible for administration. Mayor, in my pack, I don't know, did you give these to everyone?
No.
Or was it just to me?
Okay.
So, I had asked about surrounding areas and what office hours were in the surrounding areas. And so, the mayor did the research on that.
Something of that. Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Mayor, can I have John Esman approach your podium and discuss what he's holding?
Well, why don't you, Mr. Esman has some more details of those office surrounding area comparisons?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, if that's true, maybe your particular twenty-six?
I don't know. I don't, this was in my packet and so-
He has some, some-
I believe Stacy had gotten prepared this. It's her initials.
Did you?
I misread.
But, well, why don't you go ahead and finish your thoughts, Mr. Martin, because I think we have more detail on that.
I was just going to speak into the record, what other, for the record's sake. Ashland is from eight to four, Ontario nine to four, Mansfield eight to four, Lexington is from seven thirty to four, Willard eight to four thirty, Norwalk eight to four thirty, Galleen eight to four, and Musir is from eight to five. So obviously, having eight to four is not out of my stretch of imagination in, in our area. So with that, I'm excited.
Mr. Esman? If you could back off, let me just talk on area comparisons.
Right. I have another list as well. I could get a copy in your box or some email as well. But there's a significant more areas, communities around this area that I've researched and brought up. It's interesting just to kind of take a look at what other communities or their work hours are afforded over to, or to the council. Just wanted to bring up the, the eight to four. I had noticed when the office hours shifted from, from the eight to four thirty, and I'm going to speak specifically to the utilities office, I noticed there was a reduction in overtime. There was, the operations were a little more fluid. They just operated more efficiently. When we got into the COVID, the, the factor, the reason why they had reduction from eight to five to eight to four thirty was due to some of merit of wage. This was when the general fund was in, in dire straits, if you will. There's a hardship in the general fund. The administration at that time, instead of seeking wage increase, there was a merit of reduction in hours of work. That's how that came about. So those are just leads with that. So when it went from eight to four thirty to eight to four, that was due to COVID, to COVID restrictions. We separated the personnel within the offices between City Hall and the utilities office. We downsized that, that was, they shipped, if you will, from eight to four to eight to four. And we actually separated the personnel. So with that, we needed to maintain the operations very fluidly between that, those eight straight hours. So with that, we noticed real quick that the office was, had less overtime again. So management was seeing this real quick that the, the operations of the offices, City Hall and utilities office, was operating more efficiently. Real quick, we noticed that. And the overtime was reduced as well. So it was kind of an administrative decision at that time, noticing the efficiencies, that it was more, just with cost efficiencies, not to mention the reduction in utility costs as well. There's reduction of five hundred, five hundred and twenty hours of less of precision use, if you will, throughout that timeframe. So if you look, I looked at utilities office and City Hall and I calculated that number. So just, just all those efficiencies, it kind of makes sense to keep it to eight to four. It does run more efficiently to eight to four. I, I seen that real quick within the office. So as far as sacrificing customer service and, and speaking into the utilities office, the, we offer bill pay online now, we have more ACH, we have more emails to customers than ever before. The traffic within the offices is diminished. We actually eliminated, eliminated the part-time clerk because of that. So we've noticed the efficiencies are, are better today than they were in the usual past because of that. So the day to four is, it seems to be a really good timeframe for the work hours between City Hall and utilities office. This is kind of what I'm bringing up. I do have additional information from other counties that we do expect to see as well.
Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I- Because I've been around forever, but for decades and decades and decades, City Hall and utilities office were open at eight in the morning to five in the afternoon, a total of forty-five hours every week. Now they're only open from eight to four, forty hours a week. So five less additional hours that were available to serve the public. Now, you know, I haven't addressed that in this ordinance. But that's the reality, is we are providing a lesser level of service to the community than we were, honestly, forty years ago when someone I know, you know, when, thirty years ago, whatever it was, it was at City Hall.
Further discussion? Mr. Martin?
At this point, I'm kind of in the middle of the road with this. So this is the second reading, so I'll be voting in favor of it at this point. But I'm in the middle of the road. I'm going to look at some of the numbers Mr. Esman's going to give us, but my other thought is I still like to leave the flexibility with the future mayors. That's where I stand right now.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, so my thought, this is my thought process before I get into a motion to amend this. My thought process is that this should set a minimum standard of service, a minimum standard of service that can be expected. And that if the administration or utilities department wants to for a time expand that level of service or experiment at that level of service, that they would have the flexibility to do that without necessarily having to go to council. As well as if there are emergencies that aren't listed here, you know, something other than a weather emergency or a natural disaster, that the mayor would have the ability to close offices down as well. And, you know, those could be a, a power outage, which necessarily a natural disaster. It could be, you know, there's a significant death at City Hall or some, you know, there's levels of things that are beyond our purview but are an emergency. So I'm still kind of formulating through how we establish the minimum standard without being so prescriptive. And maybe it's a matter of, we don't necessarily say hours operation, but we say it's, it needs to be open a minimum of forty hours a week, right? And, but I'm still thinking through that. And I don't think I'm quite ready to add a minute there. However, I am, would like to move to amend the last part of the last sentence of, well, I guess it'll be section one there, where it says may be closed for weather emergencies or other natural disasters. To amend that to say, may be closed for emergencies at the discretion of the mayor with posted warnings.
Would, would Mr. Martin read that again, please?
Uh, may be closed for emergencies.
Can I remember what I said?
At the discretion of the mayor with posted warning.
Thank you very much.
Then, then the word, I guess the word or is again right after that, correct?
Nope, just period.
All period.
Yeah, because natural disasters will be emergency, everything will be emergency.
So you're striking the words weather emergencies or other natural disasters?
Correct, yes.
And placing a period after the word warnings. That is your amendment?
Second.
There we have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Rob, that under office hours, the last phrase would be amended, striking weather emergencies or other natural disasters at the end of that sentence and replacing it with emergencies at the discretion of the mayor with posted warnings. That is the motion to amend. Discussion on the motion to amend? All right, we'll vote on that amendment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Yay.
That the motion to amend passes. Further discussion? Mr. Martin.
Again, I'm going to go back to the minimum levels of service. I think that's the expectation we've set. But I've always been very concerned with the, I'll call it the banker mentality of government services. There are people who work other shifts that aren't able to necessarily get into City Hall during those hours. You know, if they're working eight to five themselves, how are they supposed to come in and pay their taxes and stuff like that versus have to take a day off, et cetera? Utilities, I'm not as concerned about, because there are other methods to do that, right? Whether it's ACH, online bill pay, some of those are, we're working to improve those services, though. We know where the deficiencies are with that. So I'm not as concerned with that as I am, you know, basic City Hall, you know, being able to come in and get a birth certificate. And, you know, we work eight to five, and when are you supposed to be able to do that? Having a little more flexibility there is something I think we could benefit from. But again, I don't want to be prescriptive here, because I don't know what that balance is. And it might take some experimentation, it might take some looking at, you know, what are, you know, the needs. You know, if we get tons of traffic in the morning and very little traffic in the afternoon, well, maybe we need to open up earlier to facilitate that and close earlier. And we go from seven to three, you know, I, so I don't want necessarily to be prescriptive. But that's just something I'm formulating my thoughts, and I'll be working on in the next couple of weeks, what does that look like and how can we put that in legislation? Again, that isn't so restrictive that positive experimentation for customer service can't happen at the same time setting a minimum level of service that our citizens can count on. So, thank you.
If I made my humble suggestion would be to come in and talk with the personnel, I think it'd give a good bit of information from there. All right, we're ready to vote on ordinance number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-one. Roll call, please. Mr. Mark.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Barton.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
Orderment number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-one passes. It's second reading.
Ordinance number thirty-four, two thousand one, enacting section one thousand forty point twelve, connections required into chapter one thousand forty, water of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for first reading. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the first reading of orderment number thirty-four, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
I'm looking at the actual section two that has the language, the paragraph that, the, as I say, begins with each existing home. There's two. The second paragraph that begins with each existing home. My marginal note is good. I like the idea that, you know, we'll be able to monitor water usage so we can bill appropriately for sewer. In the first paragraph, each newly constructed home, da-da-da-da, really within reasonable distance from an existing public water source. Well, reasonable people can disagree on how to define reasonable, so I, it says, "as determined by the city engineer." So that gives that person quite a bit of authority there, so. I see there's no provision here to appeal this to City Council if they don't like that. The other paragraph that begins with each existing home, and it makes, "The private water source shall comply with the laws and rules set forth by the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, the County Health Department, or the City Division of Health, whichever." And my question is about why there's a reference to the County Health Department? Because they have no jurisdiction within the city limits.
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah. That is language that was actually pulled from chapter twelve forty-six, Design Standards. It was very insane language.
From which? What was the guy saying?
That's in the Subdivisal Regulation, but for instance, Barrymore, the Land Mary. At some point, though, there's a city water name near there that's not in the city. So their Health Department, the County Health Department, will have jurisdiction on the sewer. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, water.
It's water. Mr. Gates.
Well, they, you know, it's, but they don't have a private water source.
No.
No, Mr. Martin.
My feeling is if it will never apply, it will never apply, so.
Okay. No discussion? Mr. Martin.
In craft of this, we did allow for, instead of forcing everyone to be connected, we did allow for, force them to have that leader, so we can appropriately meter, basically giving them the option. And so I think it strikes a nice balance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
Orderment number thirty-four, two thousand twenty-one passes. It's first reading.
Ordinance number thirty-seven, two thousand twenty-one, transferring appropriations for the year two thousand twenty-one and declaring an emergency.
Move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Gates and a second by Mister Martin. At ordinance number thirty-seven, I'm sorry, that the rule requiring that ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
That motion to suspend passes.
Move the ordinance be taken up and passed.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Gates and a second by Mister Martin for the passage of ordinance number thirty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Mister Mark.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this is to use the rest of our CARES Act money that has to be expended by the end of the month. And so the, all of those front line items, essentially that's where it's left over after we moved all the enclosures. And then the two line items, those are where I want to put it. And the first of those is computer support for nineteen four ninety-six. I've had a lot of conversations with our income tax department, and we're a little bit behind the bar as far as reporting. You know, currently you have to either bring in your tax returns or mail them in. This, our tax software does have an option to allow electronic filing. And so what we'd like to do is to use these funds to set up electronic filing and electronic paying through our website. Unfortunately, I was really hoping that we could get integrated with TurboTax and other tax preparation softwares so that when they hit you file with their federal return, it will also do ours. Our tax software is not quite there yet, so this is sort of a step in the right direction. I'm hoping that they can integrate the rest soon. But, you know, from a taxpayer standpoint, this would allow folks to not have to come into the office. You know, they can make the payments and file the returns online whenever they wanted to. From a manpower standpoint, the income tax department is pretty certain this is going to reduce their hours and allow us to work on things like compliance issues and other tasks where in the office to better serve the citizens. So I think that is a great CARES Act use by being able to keep people from standing in lines in City Hall. I think it's going to benefit the citizens and the staff all around. Really excited about it. If you guys so choose to appropriate that. The remaining three thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-two cents, that will empty the fund. Those will be used to reimburse the general fund for police inquiry wages during the period when everything was shut down and their roles changed. We spent a lot of money, or, no, we used, like, a good deal of funds last year for that, but I did leave some on the table from my calculations. So I believe that is a fair usage of the funds as well.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
Orderment number thirty-seven, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Ordinance number thirty-eight, two thousand one twenty-one, creating temporary appropriations for the year two thousand twenty-two and declaring an emergency.
Move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Gates and a second by Mister Martin. That the rule requiring the ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin. Mister Rob.
Yay.
The motion to suspend passes.
Move the ordinance be taken up and passed.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Gates and a second by Mister McLaughlin for the passage of ordinance number thirty-eight, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Mister Gates.
Just a question if the finance director will have a certificate for this.
I certainly will, yes.
Will that happen? Excuse me, Mayor, an amended certificate from the Budget Commission.
Oh, yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
Orderment number thirty-eight, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Ordinance number thirty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shelby to enter into contract with the International Association of Firefighters, Local two thousand four ninety-two, and declaring an emergency.
Move that the rule requiring that ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Martin and a second by Mister Gates that the rule requiring that ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
Motion to suspend passes.
Move the ordinance be taken up and passed.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Gates and a second by Mister McLaughlin for the passage of ordinance number thirty-nine, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
Orderment number thirty-nine, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Ordinance number forty, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into a contract with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local ETS, Unit A, and declaring an emergency.
I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Gates and a second by Mister McLaughlin that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
Motion to suspend passes.
Move the ordinance be taken up and passed.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Gates and a second by Mister Martin for the passage of orderment number forty, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
Orderment number forty, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Ordinance number forty-one, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into a contract with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local ETS, Unit B, and declaring an emergency.
I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Gates and a second by Mister McLaughlin that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
Motion to suspend passes.
Move the ordinance be taken up and passed.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Gates and a second by Mister Martin for the passage of orderment number forty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Gates.
Yay.
Mister Martin.
Yay.
Mister McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mister Rob.
Yay.
Orderment number forty-one, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Ordinance number forty-two, two thousand twenty-one, amending substitute ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-one, establishing wages for department heads and other non-serviced employees.
Move for first reading.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Gates and a second by Mister Martin for the first reading of orderment number forty-two, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Mister Gates.
Mayor, the most significant thing in this ordinance is, on the second page, called the Finance Director has recommended that the, what had been, or is currently, the position of income tax clerk be split into income tax clerk one and income tax clerk two. In discussions with him, you can see for income tax clerk one, from a range of fifteen dollars to twenty-three dollars, and for income tax clerk two, from seventeen dollars to twenty-five dollars. Other changes, there was, or there is, in the current ordinance, a section three that reads that wages and salary shall not increase by more than four percent, in parenthetical, four percent per year, except by a vote of two-thirds, two-thirds majority of members of council. The, the history of this is back when John Campbell was the fourth ward representative on council. He's the one that came up with this language, so we're talking about going back into the late nineties. As, as best as I can surmise and recall, he was concerned that the mayor, I don't know any other way to say this, but might have a pet or pets among the department heads. And that would, absence this four percent cap, would, would have pay increases that perhaps were based not on the person's performance, but perhaps on, on relationships with the, with the mayor at the time. I have no such concerns about the present mayor that he plays pets among any of the department heads. And four percent, you know, for, for quite some time now, has just barely been above the rate of inflation. I'll, I'll tell you a little story, and I know the hour's late. I, I once applied for and got a job. It was a job that I really, really wanted. But the pay was, was much less than I thought. Well, I was there for less than a year, and I proved my worth to my employer. And he gave me, I should say, I earned anyways. I earned what amounted to a twenty percent raise, because I had proved my worth to this employer. And, which confirmed to me I made the right decision to accept that job. But I think that, you know, four percent restriction is just, it was arbitrary at the time, it was arbitrary now. So now with that, having said that, I got from the finance office the current wages for all of the incumbents in these positions. And remembering that the negotiated contracts have a nine percent increase over the term. And remembering that the negotiated contracts have a nine percent increase over the term, I took their current wages and increased them by nine percent. In every single case, they are still within the range and well within the ranges. So in consultation with the finance director, it was like, you know, not going to, not going to increase those, those top limits of the, of the ranges there. Well, those aren't ranges, but there's, there's a maximum figure, and in some cases, there are, there is a range. But again, if you add nine percent to what someone's currently making, they are, they are well within the range. And so decided not to make any changes, changes there. Now, there are a few, three positions, probation officer, secretary to the mayor and finance director, and secretary to the law director. The begin, the, the low part of that range is thirteen dollars. In consultation with finance director, we made those fifteen dollars. So those are the changes to the current ordinance that covers non-unionized employees. If you have any questions, I'm sure the finance director and I can, can answer them, or will certainly try to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
What's the language of the struck in section three?
I can, I can pass my copy over. It's this one right there. That's, that's the one that limited, hamstrung, restricted, whatever, whatever verb we want to use, that held the mayor to four percent increases.
This is first reading, by the way. Mr. Martin?
I, I don't mind tweaking the language in section three. I definitely feel uncomfortable removing it. I, I like to have some kind of safeguards there. Of course, you know, one could say, well, the limits themselves and the safeguards. I don't know. I think that's something that we need to look at further, but, yeah, it is first reading.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, for the first reading of ordinance number forty-two, two thousand forty-one.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Ordinance number forty-two, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number seventy-one, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shelby to sign memoranda of understanding with the fraternal order of police, number one eighty, sergeants, captains, patrol officers, and dispatchers regarding a reopen for wages and a modification of Article nineteen holidays and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be, or, excuse me, move the resolution be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of resolution seventy-one, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Resolution number seventy-one, two thousand twenty-one passes. Oh, here we go. Further miscellaneous business? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I wonder if any of my colleagues had any thoughts about a date for our swearing-in? I don't know if people are going to be out of town between the holidays.
I've gone all over the place, I don't know. What are the preferences, Mr. Martin?
We are not going to be out of town this year, so.
Sometime in that last week, December, is that what we, that's where we?
It, it might have to do with the availability of the judge. So.
I might check with, with the judge and then throw out some dates. Yeah. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, current, early.
So, Mayor, you're going to check with the judge?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll send out some possible dates that she's available. Zero in on the best we can. Any other miscellaneous business? Oh, Mr. Martin, is it?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Do want to mention, we got a new foster placement baby we don't have very much, and we reached out to the community, and the community really embraced us and gave us tons of baby stuff. And so in doopits and stuff like that, we're going to donate to the pregnancy center and stuff like that. But it's just very nice to have a community that's willing to help out in a time of need. We certainly needed it, but we definitely appreciate that, so.
Well, good for you, and good for the community, thank you. Good to report. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I sent this out as an email, but for the record, I'm next, the twentieth, next council meeting, I'm having an outpatient procedure, and prudence indeed would dictate that I stay home that day. So I ask that I be excused for medical reasons on the twentieth.
Yes. Very good, and we'll surely keep an eye on prayer for that, too.
Thank you, that's kind. I'll, I'll, I'll tattle on the, the finance director. His reply to my email was, "No, I shouldn't be excused." He wants me to explain the fiscal, the financial statement while under the effect of drugs.
It could be a lot more exciting.
Heavy caffeine is probably recommended anyways. But with that, Mayor, I move the council adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment. Roll call, please. Oh, we can just hang over like two minutes? We can make it ten o'clock.
No.
Somebody do a little stuff.
It's non-debatable.
Oh, nothing, non-debatable. That's what we'll call.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Council adjourns at nine fifty-eight. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm about a swearing-in, but you may get a swearing-at.
I think it's cheaper stepping around the whole time.
I'm sure we had an audience on the website the whole time.